Good afternoon, all. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Can we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Hopkins?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Ms. Quintern?
Here.
Madam Chair, the Clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
Thank you very much. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. At this time, Dr. Sneed, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, Madam Chair. There are no adjustments to the agenda.
Okay. Hearing none, I'd like a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying yes? Yes?
Yes.
Noes? Motion carries. And at this time, we will drop down to consent agenda for the monthly bills and financial reports. And I trust that everyone's had time to review this. So I'd like a motion to approve the minutes from April 25, 2022, a special meeting April 25, 2022, work session, May 9, 2022, regular meeting, May 2022, financial report, and the monthly school nutrition fund report, as well as requested.
So moved. I'll make that motion.
Okay. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now down to monthly operating bills. Mr. Jones?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to entertain or make a motion that we accept the monthly operating bills in the sum of $4,783,712.34.
Thank you. And I reviewed those bills as well, so I will second that motion and ask everyone in favor to say yes or no?
Yes.
Yes? No? Okay. No-no votes. It passes. All right. So from that, we will drop down to public comment. And first up for public comment is on the ESER III grant and plans. I'd like to open public comment at this time. Ms. Byram, has anyone signed up to speak on this?
No, ma'am, not on the ESER.
Okay. Hearing that no one has signed up to speak to the ESER grant and plan, I will declare that public comment closed. And secondly, I will open just public comment at this time. Mrs. Byram, has anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, ma'am. The first speaker is Jennifer Schmid.
I am one of three speech pathologists for the county. We need a fourth SLP. From here on out, when I say SLP, I am referring to a speech-language pathologist. To my knowledge, Orange County has been understaffed in SLP at least since 2016 and has needed to contract out since. While this is only my second year in Orange, I've spent half of my early career here. I even bought a townhouse last March, walking distance to one of the schools I service and plan to stay. My two other SLP colleagues have each been with the county for at least 10 years. OCPS does not have difficulty retaining SLPs. It has difficulty monetarily incentivizing getting anyone to join the team. The role of an SLP is broad. We can work in a range of settings, from public schools, hospital-inpatient settings, skilled nursing facilities, outpatient rehab centers, private practices, early intervention, and more. When considering pay scales for SLPs, school districts are competing not only with other school districts, but also entirely different professional settings in which we are qualified to work. SLPs hold both a state licensure and a national certificate of clinical competency that qualifies us to have higher earning potential than that which is frequently offered in public schools. The biggest difficulty and source of burnout for me is the pay. I live and work in Orange. My cost of living, mortgage, utilities, gas, car insurance, car payment, groceries, recurring personal medical costs, average 90% of my current monthly pay. I thank God that I don't have student loans. I've held a second job for the past four months to help manage bills. The increased pay for the upcoming school year is a step in the right direction. However, I know I have greater earning potential as an SLP and opportunities to make more money elsewhere and/or creating my own company to work for myself. I live walking distance to work, and I still find myself regularly thinking about a different job, how it might help manage bills more easily without the need for supplementary income. It should not be expected that I need a spousal income to help manage. Tuition for UVA's master's SLP program is $17,800 for one academic year as an SLP. Tuition for JMU is $22,500 per year. That is on top of an $80,000 to $100,000 paid undergrad. Add $50,000 for master's tuition, and entry-level SLPs in Virginia are looking at $150,000 spent on education. That's three years of a teacher's salary, more than. I do want to acknowledge the SLP stipend. I ran calculations, and my hourly rate for the next year will be 38 per hour. Going into my fifth year in the field, this is only $3 above my starting rate of $35 an hour, which was offered to me as a subcontractor to a neighboring school district, straight out of grad school. When I left my previous job before coming to Orange, I took a $10,000-plus pay cut to work here. While the SLP add-on is an excellent step in the right direction towards the, excuse me, step in the right direction towards valuing the SLP profession, I did not want to miss the opportunity to continue advocating for SLPs in OCPS. Madam Chair, permission for another three minutes to speak? If not granted today, then I will be back.
Yes. Another day, please. Thank you.
What? I'm sorry.
Another day, please.
Another day? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Byram, the next speaker?
Ms. Dunneese Redd.
So I'm here today to give you all a tidbit about what I've been experiencing, my family has been experiencing, since being in the Orange County Public School system. So I'm severely unimpressed with the Orange County Public School system. The student body at Locust Grove Middle School is festering with entitled racist children who are supported by an administration who will not discipline students for calling black peers racial slurs such as monkey and nigger. On April 11, my family and I had a meeting with LGMS administration and was told that a white student would not receive a consequence for calling my daughter a racial slur, monkey. The administration consistently viewed the incident as a name-calling incident instead of what it actually is, a racial incident. Let's be clear of what a name-calling situation is. You're ugly, you're fat, you're retard, you're a nerd. These are examples of name-calling situations. You're a monkey, nigger, and black bee. These are racial slurs and deserve a more heightened level of action. On April 15, I had a second meeting with the now-retired superintendent and was told there would be an expeditious follow-up regarding my dissatisfaction on how LGMS administration unjustly handled the situation. I have yet to hear from the superintendent and/or anyone from his department, and I'm sure he's enjoying retirement. My comment to you all today is to advise you of a serious issue within the Orange County Public School systems. You all lack any representation for black students. You have teachers who have coffee mugs with political messages such as "No Lives Matter" at LGMS. You have administrators who tell children to not talk about it anymore when dealing with racial issues at LGMS. You have a white guidance counselor who gaslight black students when dealing with sensitive matters, who are defensive and who aren't well-versed in managing race issues when they come up at school. You have a serious problem that I'm sure has been surfacing for quite some time. My message is simple. Black students do not have any course of action to take when faced with racial issues. Why is that? Do you not believe this is a problem within the Orange County Public School systems? Do you think children aren't dealing with these racial issues? Think again. Schools who lack accountable systems to protect students from race issues are the stomping grounds for racist children to bully black students and feel comfortable entertaining friends with racially insensitive jokes and comments such as monkey and nigger. My daughter has been taunted in the neighborhood and the school setting. There's no formal complaint system, so just like my student, these issues remain in-house, hushed, and unsolved. These students are told to hush and deal with racial issues. What are you all going to do about this?
Ms. Byram, the next speaker?
The next speaker is Ms. Laura Daniel.
I'll remove my mask because I know Mr. Hopkins won't listen to me. Well, he won't listen to me anyways. So how do I follow that up? I've stood before you guys countless times explaining that there are racial incidences happening, and it's unacceptable, unacceptable, not only for students, for staff, for anybody to experience. Why is it happening in our schools? There's no answer. I get no answer. I get ignored. They clearly get ignored, and they should be answered more than I should be. Like, what do we, what does the public need to do? What do the students need to do? The students have stood up here before you guys and explained things. They've shared their feelings. They've shared their thoughts. They demanded what they want from you in a learning environment, a more inclusive learning environment. And yet, half of the board won't even look at them? And according to Mr. Hopkins, they don't represent his district in this county, which no, no one was bust here from the Washington Post after the article. And actually, based on the research that I've done, you guys received more emails in response of support against those resolutions and more support for against them than support for them, and yet you still say that the ones that were for the resolutions were the majority of it. It's not, you can see that people are actually showing up and caring. This is not the minority. We matter. They matter. The students matter. We need to change, and it's not based on what your political views are, or what your religion is, or anything like that. And frankly, it's kind of unacceptable that you guys are sharing your response of how you are voting on a measure before it even goes before public comment. You were sharing it amongst yourselves, saying, "Hey, this is my decision tonight," and what the public says doesn't matter at all. You are up there to represent us. You are up there to represent these students, the parents. You are up there to represent and to make and ensure there is an inclusive, inclusive, not on your definition of what you want inclusive to be, but truly an inclusive environment for all students, to be accepted, to be able to learn, and to be their best potential. Why isn't it happening? And why can no one answer that for me? Because we'd all love to know. Thank you.
Ms. Byram, next speaker?
Next speaker is Alan Daniel.
School Board and Superintendent Dr. Sneed, I wanted to speak to you all again as the matters I bring forth are important to me, and I hope by coming here, the community will hear me and will share my concerns. My motivation for coming here is not based on politics, but it's founded on the desire to see the government run properly and out of the best interests of our students. First topic of my concern is the code of conduct. When Mr. Hopkins changed the wording of the school board's code of conduct to read, "Take into consideration all laws" instead of "upholding and enforcing all laws," I knew there was going to be trouble. Anytime an elected body changes their rules allowing, ignoring, other rules, it's never a good thing. The current wording tries to make it okay for a school board member to break the law and not violate their code of conduct. I am asking the board to set their code of conduct back to what it has been in years past, the way it should be. My next topic of concern is a recently passed divisive content resolution. I'm standing here asking the board to strike this resolution down, and wanted to remind the board that they can bring it back up for a vote and reverse your earlier decision, as we saw you do with the revisions to the school board calendar. I also wanted to ask the school board to drop the explicit content resolution, as we have already had policies blocking the use of R-rated material in the classroom from kindergarten to eighth grade. It's not allowed, period. In high school, it requires parental notification, and the principal has to sign off on it. And they have to be used only relevant portions that link to the course content. So parents are already notified of sexually explicit content. For anyone interested, that policy is IIA-G, as seen on the school board's Board Docs website. This meets requirements under Senate Bill 656, so there's no need for this resolution, unless its true intent is the parts that were remaining after that, which seem to be designed to attack our LGBTQ+ students. Looking back at the May 9 meeting, we saw the community turn out in opposition of both resolutions. However, despite hearing multiple of your constituents across the districts, hearing about 30 people against resolutions and only five people spoke in favor of Ms. Quintern's resolutions, you still voted in favor of one resolution. How does that not show that there is political bias on this board? The numbers are against you on this, and you know it. Drop the sexually explicit content resolution and omit the current policies fulfill requirements under Senate Bill 656. Bring to revote the divisive content resolution and strike it down like you should have done in the first place. Prove me wrong and show Orange County that you listen to constituents and not political agendas. Thank you.
Ms. Byram, next speaker?
The next speaker is Sarah Jaeger.
Like many that have spoken before me, I do not feel heard. As a resident of District 3, I do not feel that my children's best interests are being considered at all. We showed up and spoke up at the last meeting, but three of you still voted against us. I emailed asking for answers and received radio silence from all school board members. The superintendent, however, was kind enough to respond today. Thank you, sir. School board members are elected to serve their constituents' best interests, and you are largely failing us. Ms. Quintern, you are blatantly using your position on this supposedly nonpartisan school board to launch your own political career of the conservative variety. You were quoted as saying your children attend these schools, but they are not yet old enough to enroll and will likely never attend because you favor school vouchers funding private education. You are free to groom your children with conservative religious education on your own dime, but you do not also get a say in how the rest of us teach our children. Personally, I was raised Christian, but value all religious backgrounds as valid. Have you ever heard of the division of church and state? It is an individual family's responsibility to teach religion. I'm sorry, I lost my place. I get a little bit heated about how you blatantly disregard what people are telling you to your face. Your flimsy persona of Christian martyr, informed and concerned parent don't hold up well to actual scrutiny. When asked questions by Orange County's residents and students, you do not have answers. You deflect. Quote others. Smile blankly and ask for email communication instead. We see how well you communicate that way. In regards to your resolution against divisive content, I will quote the ACLU. Our First Amendment rights to read, learn, and discuss vital topics in schools are under attack. Your stance against divisive content has ironically made you one of the most divisive figures in this school board's history. I'm sorry. This was, losing my place. Rather than focus on these divisive wedge issues, how are you focusing on bringing us all together? Your vaguely worded ban cripples teachers' ability to teach, and where do you draw the line on what books certain topics are acceptable? Orange County teachers now fear reprisal for any curriculum-related decision they make, no matter how well-intentioned. Why do you choose to make teaching more difficult? Wasn't the experience of distance learning challenging enough? How about we focus on improving test scores at Sunk during distance learning instead of these issues that you are making bigger issues than they need to be? How are we making the schools a supportive and encouraging environment based on teamwork and acceptance? That might be a start. We want answers on how you plan to make the school environment emotionally and physically safe for all. With the amount of hatred being thrown back and forth, I have genuine concern that our small country town may be the site of the next school shooting. I've read the board's policies on possessions of firearms on school property, and Mr. Sneed kindly provided me a thorough review.
Ms. Byram, the next speaker?
The next speaker is Bob Potts.
My name is Bob Potts. Excuse me. I get nervous. I don't like public speaking, but this is something that I definitely have something to say about. I'm here to speak on behalf of all the students and teachers who can't speak for themselves, that can't speak for themselves because of the fear that their families are not going to be accepting of them, whether it be gay, transgender, lesbian, non-binary, anything like that. There are a lot of parents out there in our small country area that are not accepting, and they will do everything they can to make it so that their children are taught, "Oh, you can't be like that. You can't be like that." Well, it's not right. And having a child who came out to me two years ago, I was accepting, but I was also brought up in an area that, in a family that was accepting on my mother and my father's side. My sister is accepting of my daughter. And it's something that, you know, that I really feel very confident about, that you people don't want the LGBT community in there. And there are a few things that, you know, if you're going to make a teacher out a student to their parents, that is going to ruin, ruin the student-teacher relationship. What happens when a student goes home after being outed and that student is abused or physically harmed, emotionally harmed, and wants to come to the teacher? Now he can't come to the teacher, or she can't come to the teacher and talk to that person because they're going to out him again. What happens to the child that is getting physically, sexually, or emotionally abused at home? They're not going to come to the teacher because the teacher is going to go back and tell their parents or their abuser, and that just ruins our, again, the teacher-student relationship. And I will say the last thing to the student body. I am out there for you. I'm a county resident, and my door is always open for you. You know, you need to talk? You need a place? I'm in there.
Ms. Byram, next speaker?
Patty Lumston.
I'm Patty Lumston. Can you hear me? I'm also an introvert and do not like speaking in public. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Patty Lumston. My daughter, Gwendolyn, is a rising senior at Orange County High School, and I have two older daughters, Audrey and Gracie, who graduated in 2020. We live in the Monford area in District 1. I have been former president of the Prospect Heights Middle School Parent Advisory Board for five years. I was a former, I'm a former member of the parent council that used to meet with the superintendents. I'm a former Girl Scout leader. I'm a former orange clogger. Hope you all saw me at the county fair. And I've been a member of this community for a very long time. I work for SMP Global as a Director of Software and Data Engineering. SMP stands for Standards and Poor. We are a global company with over 40,000 employees. As part of that company, I am required to sign a code of business ethics every six months. In that ethics, it requires me to understand diversity, equality, and inclusion. And I am also required to take extensive training so that I can understand and accept everyone individually, how they self-identify, how I self-identify, and also to be able to communicate how I self-identify to make our environment comfortable and relaxed and engaging. Every day, I work with people across the globe, from Malaysia to California, from my home. The ability to work remotely has opened up opportunities globally, and we need to prepare our children for those opportunities. Diversity, equity, and inclusion needs to be the resolutions that we are adopting. Racism and inequality affects everyone. The policies and resolutions you pass today may have unintended consequences in the future. The majority and the minority numbers are shifting and blending. In 2020, the census reported that multiracial families increased from 2.9% of the population in 2010 to 10.2% of the population in 2020. The world is changing and blending. We need to protect our children and not pass resolutions that will reinforce derision. Defining sexual orientation and gender identity as sexually explicit subjects is obtuse and reckless.
Ms. Byram, the next speaker?
Gwendolyn Lumston.
Been nervous. Hi. I just wanted to introduce myself, as I'm sure you'll hear more of me in the future. My name is Gwen Lumston. I am a rising senior at Orange County Public School System, in high school. I'm a member of BFGS, as well as a member of two groups that represent the youth of Orange County. I have attended Orange County Public Schools my entire life, from elementary school all the way till now. You would think I would know a lot about this county, living here my entire life, and I can tell you, it is not accepting. I have firsthand experience, and probably wondering why a very privileged female, white girl would face these problems. I identify as pan, and for those of you who do not know what that is, simply put, I love people. It doesn't matter if they are male, female, non-binary, if they identify as gay, lesbian, bi, or any part of the LGBTQ+ community. I love people for being people. And if you're wondering why, you should hear from me. I need you to know that I exist, that I am here to represent people who are like me, and to know that these resolutions are not acceptable for you to pass, that it will hurt people like me. I have been here my entire life, and I have not felt more hurt and unaccepted in this community than right now. I do not agree with the resolution you have passed. I am not a person of color, and I will never know what it feels like to be a person of color, but I know it is harmful. It will harm everyone. And I also do not agree with the resolution, the sexually explicit materials resolution. It is harmful and discriminatory. It is harmful and discriminatory. Thank you for your time. I hope you would listen and know who I am now. Thank you. I'll see you in the future.
The next speaker is Jade Lemon.
Hello? Okay. I will be returning to Orange County High School as a senior next year. Not only am I a proactive student, but I am also bisexual. I want to make it clear, I do not agree with this policy. During the school board meeting in May, many parents, licensed professionals, students discussed concerns on how the policy will impact the mental and physical well-being of the LGBTQ+ community attending our schools, and the perception of our expressed concerns were disregarded. Ms. Quinter, our county representative and supposed professional, spoke passionately in support of the policy, I'm sorry, I'm so shaking, public speaking is not my thing, by choosing to refer Ted Bundy, a serial killer, by stating, and I quote, "In fact, Ted Bundy admitted that early pornographic acts contributed to his later behavior in life." She clearly has opportunities to excel in addressing a forum with relative and beneficial information that is related to the topic of discussion. The last time I looked at myself, my family members, friends, and peers, neither of us demonstrate pornographic, perverted, or any other disparaging identifier a serial killer could use to justify his disgusting and murderous actions. Although I do not concur with this policy, I am not ignorant to the change that is occurring nationwide, and the odds that my non-concurrence may not change that. This policy requires parents to be notified, but it's lacking in addressing the safety measures. What protects the children from being physically and verbally abused by unaccepting parents? What is the risk of those students who will be subjected to go home and face their parents in the unknown that what allies them? In a perfect world, all kids should or would be able to decide when or if we should tell our parents how we identify with the LGBTQ+ community, and this policy takes this away from us. Without a proper policy in place and resources to ensure we are protected, to ensure the child is protected, the children are the ones affected, and our existence is not sexually explicit. Mrs. Quinters and others who align with her are ignorantly, inappropriately, and quite frankly unlawfully slandering and sexualizing us. At the end of the day, you are putting your beliefs and fears before us, our rights and our safety. The unwillingness to truly get informed and educated makes us targets to get abused, bullied, raped, or killed by these unaccepting parents and the unaccepting society we live in. As a student, I can firsthand attend to friends who have become homeless or punching bags by people just disgusting as Ted Bundy, who justified the abuse by blaming the victims. The bottom line is, it's your inherent responsibility to protect the safety of us, the children, and what in this policy addresses our safety.
Ms. Barham, next speaker.
Next speaker is Michael Lemon.
That was my daughter that just came up here, and I'm so proud of her. As we know, I'm doing something right.
That's right.
And there is right, and there is wrong. And once again, I spend hours writing a speech, and then I'm listening to people. I just don't get it. I don't understand. This is a public school, school board for public school, the taxpayers, not the taxpayers of just the parents with straight kids, not the taxpayers with parents with just white kids. If, what really astounds me, and I didn't get a chance to say this last time, is we are a nation of diversity, all races, religion. We're supposed to be embracing that. And in the last decade, I know that there's been a huge push to stop bullying schools. This is like completely at odds with that. You're going to promote bullying. If someone doesn't like someone, they're going to say, "Hey, teacher, I know they're gay, you better tell their parents." How can, in good conscience, you guys do that? No, I know it's not all of you, and I know some people really stood up for it, and maybe it's because this school board lacks diversity. If you're going to implement and create a policy, like the race policy from last time that was passed, how can you do that when there's only one race being represented? If you're going to do a policy against the gay community, how can you do that unless someone on the board is from that community, that can explain what they've gone through? It's just illogical to sit there that, you can't stand there and go, "I know what's right for all people, regardless of race or sexuality." That's just ignorant. And you have to have people that are on the board that you can discuss before you start implementing these policies. It makes me sad that 2022, we're going backwards, and you're promoting it. And I don't really understand what the true agenda is, because a public school is supposed to promote nurturing, to help our kids learn, and protect them? If you think by outing them to their parents, how is that going to protect them and encourage them to learn more? And if things are the way they are, how is that hurting the other students that are straight? Is that somehow prohibiting their learning? I don't think so. And is outing these students going to help their learning? No. It's irrelevant. But it sure will hurt the students that are outed. And the last decade, we've been so pro-mental health. This is going to reverse that, and you're going to crush their mental health.
Ms. Barham, next speaker.
The next speaker is Liberty Chavez.
My name is Liberty Chavez, and I will be a senior at Orange County High School, and I am 100% the sexually explicit content policy. In 2019, my family moved to Locust Grove as a decision to remove me from a school environment where I did not fit into any ideologies of normal, which resulted in my well-being being diminished. Moving here was intentional because of the school district's all-inclusive policies and statements. I was welcomed into a diverse school environment, and it helped me heal. My teachers and my peers, in or out of my circle, helped me find the confidence and courage to be who I am today. I am a productive, caring, contributing, and bisexual member of this community. I'm on the opposite end of the statistics. I am blessed because I come from a supportive mom who prioritizes the well-being of my brother, who is openly gay, and me, who just recently identified with the LGBTQ+ community. She ensures we move to places that embrace diversity and inclusivity and encourage us to surround ourselves with open-minded and humble individuals. Prior to my brother sharing his sexuality, he was in a middle school environment that subjected him to fear of being himself, to shame, depression, and anxiety. My brother's friend was about to be outed and attempted suicide by jumping in front of a train, because he thought that would be better than facing his parents and being Sorry, I lost my place. My family has fostered children who have been raped, beaten, and whose parents have attempted to murder them because they identify with the LGBTQ+ community. This policy requires children to be outed to their parents without their consent. Where is the safety in that? This policy presents a safety risk, and nobody from your end has spoken about what the policy and resources are in place to protect involuntarily outed students from becoming homeless or facing physical and mental abuse. At one time, there was nothing in place for schools to protect a potentially abused or neglected child. If a teacher suspected abuse, they contacted the parent directly. Over time, that was proven to be a dangerous risk to the child, and the law changed and required involvement of local police and child protective services before parents were even contacted, a mandated process to help keep children safe. In the interim of hoping one day to reverse this state legislation, I am concerned for my friends and my peers. There are reasons they have not shared what their sexuality is. We rely on our government and our adults to take their inherent responsibilities serious and to protect us. I have two questions that I stand before you and beg that are addressed. And not hastily implement that policy will leave the people I care about at risk in being physically abused, sexually assaulted, homeless, or killed by their parents or through suicide. What, question one, what measures will be put in place to verify the outing as true or accurate? Or will children just be outed off whims or based on who they converse with? Question two, what steps will be put in place to protect the children being involuntarily outed to unaccepting parents or guardians?
The next speaker is Ann Kraft.
First, I'm going to state that they're winning, and when I say "they," I mean the 1%. I mean the 1% that doesn't care about color, they don't care about the children, they don't care about any of it, because they are collecting data and amassing data on all of our children using early warning assessments they call social emotional learning. And under the Library of Virginia, they keep it in a little thing called a statewide longitudinal database for 75 years. It spits out psychological assessments. They are filling it out, ask your children, they're doing it in high school, the teachers are doing many assessments on your children. It is state law. So first of all, they have divided us by race, by color, by gender, and everything, so that, guess what? They're winning. The elitists are winning. We are losing. All of our children are losing, all of them. Because when they go to apply to college, they're going to have a social emotional score, just like China does. It's already there, it's been going on for years. Second of all, this is me pregnant with my child. These are pictures of the four babies that I lost while I was pregnant. This is a picture of me holding my son, delivered sleeping at 22 weeks. This is a copy of his cremation. This is his little hat. Tell me what part of that gives you the right to remove what I do as a parent? To think that I went through all of this and then to jump to the assumption that all parents are going to abuse their children is the most ignorant thing I have ever heard in my entire life. To say that you're going to out children, did anybody read this? It's not about gay children, it's about identifying, okay? There is, US Supreme Court says parents have the right, there's Virginia Code. You don't get to interpret the law. If you have to follow the Constitution and the Code of Virginia until it changes, and if you don't, it's a violation of the oath of office. So until you can change it, sorry, you don't get to interpret it. This is not an easy situation. I don't think anybody in the state of Virginia has done it correctly. There has to be a middle ground. But everybody coming up here and stating that all children have to do this, or all children have to do this, everybody's losing. There has to be a middle ground. It might not be the easy way, but to come up here and say that you have to force something on all children to include some, one group of children, makes no sense because you're excluding the rest of them. You cannot create law, you have to follow what already exists.
Ms. Barham, next speaker.
Catherine Wason. Okay, Alyssa Waller.
Give it to our clerk, please.
Thanks, Ms. Waller.
Good evening, everyone. Attending last month's meeting and a recent community voter registration event, it is very apparent there are several examples where children of color have had to deal with race relations in school, made to feel like their concerns have not been heard or their feelings are invalid. Many of our students who identify with the LGBTQ+ community left last month's meeting, frustrated and hurt, also feeling unheard and invalid. I would like the board to consider a few things before continuing their efforts in providing what's best for all the children in Orange County Public Schools. Consider making professional development classes available and mandatory to board members as well as staff in the school system on equity, diversity, and inclusion. University of South Florida Moon College of Business offers a free class and certificate upon completion. I know because I have one. UVA Office of Equity and Diversity also offers classes as well. Consider having the school board and Orange County Public School staff take professional development courses on emotional intelligence and effective-based leadership. Documents are provided for reference for you to read in your free time, rather than continuing to post and push political agenda on social media. Our board should also be considering how to retain teachers. The continued efforts to push these hot-button political issues are causing us to lose teachers and other staff. As we all know, representation and safe space are crucial components in a child's upbringing, which is not limited to home life or school life. With the divisive content proposal being approved and sexual explicit proposals vote on next month, you are hindering students' ability to confide in the well-trained and educated staff we have in Orange County Public Schools. Instead of proposals pushing hot-topic political agendas, why not focus on honest discussions and training among parents and faculty of our students to be on an agent of change for the betterment of us all? All children in the school system deserve better. Our teachers are tired of the board not taking actions on needs already, and this will just add additional measures. Lastly, I welcome the board and all in attendance to attend a multicultural festival being held in the town of Orange on Short Street, July 23rd, from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. Come out and experience the beauty and diversity our community numerous offer to all of us. Thank you.
Ms. Barham, next speaker.
Ashley Jacobs.
I come to you all with a very different topic than what's been discussed tonight, which is not to diminish the importance of that. But my name is Ashley Jacobs, and I'm a resident of Orange County and a mother of two, almost three, school-aged children. I've dedicated my 15-year career to public service, previously as a public administrator and currently as an employee of Orange County, serving youth through grant writing and programmatic opportunities. Today, I come to you with a request to work closely and quickly with the Orange County Board of Supervisors and the Orange County Sheriff's Department to provide an armed school resource officer in each and every school in Orange County. While I do not have experience serving on a school board or serving as a school administrator, I do have extensive experience in public budgeting and grant writing, and I understand the importance of funding prioritization and funding reallocation. And while I do not envy your positions, I beg you to please prioritize providing protection to our students first and working with all of the other public bodies who can make that possible. I also don't come to you with a plea and nothing to offer. I'm willing to assist the school system in any grant-writing efforts that can be pursued, to be a citizen voice who speaks to the Board of Supervisors and the Sheriff's Office, and to be an advocate for increased taxes or de-prioritized areas of funding to support prioritization of school security. With a rising second and fourth grader, I cannot stop thinking about Robb Elementary School, which serves second through fourth graders, especially the families of those precious children and their selfless teachers. The amazing staff that we have here in Orange County deserve better, and our children deserve nothing but the best. Until we have made every effort possible to provide consistent and secure protection for our children, I hope that no parent, community member, school board member, or school employee will rest. As the wife of a first responder, I also... As the wife of a first responder, I also understand that providing an SRO at every school may not protect against every possible scenario. But I do know that every effort made to protect citizens in our community is an effort that does in fact minimize traumatic experiences and provides another layer for tragedy to penetrate. The least we can do is provide an SRO for each of our schools in Orange County. Thank you for your time, and please let me know how I can do more than simply stand before you as a heartbroken mother. Let's not wait until change, let's not wait to make a change until tragedy has hit even closer to home.
The next speaker is Gayna Locker.
Good evening. My name is Gayna Locker, and this is my son, Chris Locker, a rising ninth grader, and I also have a rising fourth grader. I asked him to stand beside me tonight in hopes that you can put your political agenda aside and associate my words with a child, my child. I want you to see his face while you think about our way forward. On May 12th, I sent an email to all board members present tonight regarding, regarding the racism that Chris experienced at Prospect Heights Middle School after an in-person meeting with a group of parents, students, school administrators, and Mr. Bill Berry. My question remains unanswered. What is the consequence of racism? During our in-person meeting, students, including my son, provided examples of racism they've experienced from their peers and teachers, including being called the N-word, receiving a side-eye when enslaved people are mentioned in class, monkey noises being played from a phone and directed towards them, groups of children pretending to be monkeys towards our kids and teachers of color, and a teacher referring to a student as a cotton picker. Also being told, "I'll show you where I would have owned you when the end of the year field trip was planned at James Monroe's High, Monroe's Highland, a plantation." Our kids were home-based by choice during the last two weeks of this school year because the school could not control racism, the teachers could not control their classrooms, and we received no support from the board. This can't be how we address racism. Do we continue to excuse the children being bullied and harassed, allowing them to be virtual students because it is more convenient for the school? How long do I ask my boys to walk away? How long do I ask my boys to ignore ignorance and immaturity? How long will you allow our school system to pacify and justify racism without consequences before my boys realize that they've slipped into the same cycle that adults of color experience every single day? And again, what is the consequence of racism in our county? Our county has a clear division, starting with our school board. I am sure that the reckless resolutions discussed at recent meetings have sparked conversations for families at home. Because these resolutions aren't clearly written and do not have a safe implementation plan to support them, you are leaving the door wide open for people to assume and act accordingly, which is reckless. The zero tolerance for racism resolution was signed two years ago this month. Did we train our faculty and staff on inclusion or microaggressions, or just update the header to our website? What support is offered to students who experience racism? Your answer cannot be guidance counselors and school administration because they have not been helpful all year. Because I have never gotten a response from my email, I'm asking you now, how can we work together? How can we reach you? How can we communicate with you? How can we hold roundtables to really dig in with, to these topics that will rock our kids' lives with the student body that has shown up this year like never before, and draft implementation plans with principals and teachers to ensure the safety of all students and staff? To the world, my boys will never be white enough to be white or black enough to be black. I'm asking you to come together and help create a safe learning environment where he can be treated for what he is, a human being.
The next speaker is Larry Scott.
Good afternoon, board members, Madam Chair, Dr. Sneed, sorry about that, everyone in attendance tonight. First, I'd like to agree with Ms. Ann who spoke up here earlier. We are losing. All of us in this room are losing because the elitists pit us against each other. And I think the problem in Orange County goes deeper than a race issue. I think it is a discipline issue because people, kids in this, Kensington, this county and the schools can do whatever they want. There's fighting going on. My son was punched in the face at the middle school, and the kid who punched him is not, did not get suspended. Okay? If kids are calling each other racial slurs, they should be suspended. There's got to be discipline. Another thing, last month, when we had the, the resolutions on the table, I, I didn't understand who was running this room, because, you know, there were other parents that wanted to speak in support of those resolutions, but they were afraid. You know why? Because there were children in this room and angry parents, and it was mob rule in this room. Okay? Children were emotionally, running off emotions. Apparently, there were some mental problems with some of these kids that I, I seen a senior citizen get cussed out. Okay? Children do not set the standards. I had a conversation with my son just last week. He said, "Dad, why are you so mean?" I said, "Look, son, I'm not your best friend." I said, "There's times when you, I'm going to say things you don't like. Tough luck, but I love you, and one day you're going to thank me for it." And speaking on those resolutions, our retired superintendent, I got an email from a teacher that, and a lot of teachers agree with these resolutions, by the way. The majority of people here do not represent Hoover supports or doesn't support these resolutions. But Dr. Sneed, my case.
Order, order.
So Dr. Sneed sent an email out, and it says that at the Orange County School Board meeting on May 9th, the school board considered two resolutions that a member of the board authored regarding.
Ms. Scott.
Point of privilege.
Hold it a minute. Where is the deputy? Where is the deputy? Deputy Maddox? If you cannot control your outburst, I will have you removed. Please be respectful of everybody that is speaking.
That's why children shouldn't be here.
Point of privilege, Madam Chair.
Can't control themselves.
I would, I would ask that 20 seconds be added to his time because it was still going when people were talking over him.
We can do that. Ms. Byram, can you add, add a few seconds to Larry's? Yeah. Let me see. Whoops. Well, for some reason. Oh, sorry.
That's okay. A woman last week got six minutes, I believe.
Okay. There we go. Go ahead.
Last month. So the, let me start over with this email. At the, at the Orange County School Board meeting on May 9th, the school board considered two resolutions that a member of the board authored regarding divisive content and sexually, sexually explicit materials. A resolution is used to formalize agreements, state official positions, or recognize achievements. Resolutions may eventually lead to policy. These two resolutions in question do not affect your craft as they are not policy. That's what he said, Mr. Hopkins, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Quinter, your superintendent. These two resolutions in question do not affect your craft as they are not policy. Teachers should continue to exercise best practice in the classroom. Thank you for your support of our students and for your leadership. I guess that's a slap in the face on his way out. I hope the new, the new superintendent will be more transparent with the board with sending emails to teachers in the school system. So, children don't set the standard. Thank you.
I thank you for your time. I copied both of your draft resolutions. Well, actually, one's not a draft, it has been copied. I see no racism at all whatsoever. It says that we don't want to divide our students, and we shouldn't want to divide our students. And education should be focused on giving our students tools, not grooming them in a, in a way that a teacher thinks, "I'm sorry." Teachers do not supersede parents. They are their children, not yours. And they are the ones that set the standards for their children. And if you think they're being neglected and abused, then you can go through the system and let them know. But no teacher supersedes a parent. And these parents will set the standards and have the discussions with their children. And I don't like the grooming that I'm hearing going around in our, in Prospect and in the high school. There should be no grooming. You don't out, out a student to their parents? What is that? They are their parents. They are to protect and to provide, and they love and nurture their children. And if they are abusing them, then go to the authorities and report it. But don't say that you're going to out them to their parents. This is grooming, and this is evil. And, and shame on the educators that are doing that to our students. Now, we, we got a lot of problems in our country, and there's only one way we're going to solve it, and that's getting God back in our culture. Judeo-Christian values are what this culture and why we are such a great nation and how we have separated ourselves from the other nations in the world. We, we are the leaders, and we're the leaders because of Judeo-Christian values and because we adopted them in our very founding documents, endowed by our Creator. Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And we need to get, ask God back in our culture, back in our families, because you know what? All of the violence, the murder, the drug addiction, broken families, abortions, it's all going to continue and get worse. It's going to get a lot worse. So if we don't ask God back in and start following the teachings that He taught us, then our, our society's over, and the school system isn't going to fix it. You fix it at home, the families fix it, and the school system is just supposed to educate and give tools so our students can go forward and be successful. It's not about how you identify. Thank you.
Ms. Byram, next speaker.
Bobby Pace.
That was her. My name is Bobby Pace. I'm a lifelong resident of Orange County. There was a gentleman up here a little bit earlier who said, "That was my daughter, and I'm so proud of her, I don't, can't stand it." That was my wife, and I'm so proud of her, I can't stand it. I'm here tonight, I want to express my support for the two resolutions that were drafted by Chelsea Quintern, and I commend the three members of this board who voted to adopt the one resolution in its amended form. I would urge you to adopt the second resolution when it comes before the board again. Also, I would like to express my appreciation and admiration for the job that Chelsea Quintern is doing on this board. This community is extremely fortunate to have someone of her caliber that is willing to devote as much of their time and energy as she is in serving us all. Thank you very much.
Ms. Byram, next speaker.
That's the final speaker that signed up tonight.
Hearing that there are no other speakers, I will declare public comment closed. And at this time, I will entertain closed session certification, please.
Pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Orange County School Board convene a closed meeting for the following. Discussion of personnel or the performance of a division employee is authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia for resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and retirement of employees in addition to the new superintendent's contract, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the school bar, school board regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Virginia.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, we're in closed session. We're back here.
Certification, please.
Whereas the Orange County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Orange County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Can I have a second? A second.
Roll call, Ms. Byram.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Ms. Quintern?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the vote as follows. Five yes votes, no-no votes. The resolution is approved by a five to zero vote.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Sneed, disposition of personnel actions?
Yes, Madam Chair, I recommend that the personnel agenda be approved as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to accept the personnel agenda, please?
I move to accept the recommended, recommendation of the superintendent to include salary adjustment, resignation, employment, and transfer of staff, and summer school and extended school year recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And at this time, Dr. Sneed, we have the approval of the school board calendar, I do believe?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have one item, and I'm going to defer that to Ms. Byram as, as it starts in July.
Yes, and this is the same calendar that I discussed with you guys last, at the last meeting with the 18th adjustment that everyone requested. So that meeting will be on July 18th, but other than that, there's no changes.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable with this calendar? So, can we entertain a motion to accept this?
I move to accept the motion or the, the school board calendar meeting, school board meeting calendar as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And at this time, I think, board member reports, and I think that's you, Ms. Quintern?
So on May 18th, we had a Head Start meeting. We discussed the budget. There was about $8,000 at that time in funding left to spend. A big portion of the in-kind donations from the school board was greatly appreciated by the Head Start Council. A lot of that had to do with, for example, blessing students. The Policy Council and Parent Committee both have about three grand. There's a 5% raise for staff, which was proposed by the school board. We discussed that our budget passed, discussion of the wall property, and discussion of just still being in the process of hiring the superintendent. The program Head Start VPI full, full day ended on May 20th. Kindergartners are an outstanding place. Behavioral and intention is stellar. Teachers met with principals to discuss individual needs. There was the groundbreaking ceremony at Gordon Barber on May 23rd. The parent report, they're looking to get volunteers back. Professional development, they're looking to get that back face-to-face. They want to host more parent events, less meetings, more parent events. And the end of the school year events were going well. And there's discuss of change in policy, but we're going to be having a work session on the 15th at 3 o'clock to discuss that further.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any, I guess that's all of the reports. Any comments from the board?
Should we be announcing that our meeting?
Well, yes. Ms. Byram, we need to put on the calendar for the appointment announcing of a superintendent, and we'd like to have a call meeting on Wednesday at 7:00.
Wednesday, this Wednesday at 7:00 p.m.?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, I will send out a meeting notice.
Thank you. And I think that's probably it. So with that being said, I will... So with that being said, I will adjourn this meeting.